The Kerrville City Council is now in session. I would like to ask you to please stand as Councilmember Seigerman offers the invocation and allegiance and the pledge.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we are grateful for our frontline friends and neighbors, the nurses, the doctors, the city leaders, the utility linemen, the dispatch workers, and all the volunteers who help keep us safe and informed. We're also grateful for the tremendous generosity of Kerrville citizens who give of their time and their finances over and over again. Be with us now as we begin to open business back up to keep COVID-19 from our city and help us to be wise about all those decisions. In your son's name we pray. Amen. Pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are conducting another council meeting in different circumstances. Obviously, the council is observing the social distance required, and it is very important. There are staff members here in the council chambers, but also the distance between them. I would like to say that we've used a variety of means for it to have citizen input in this council meeting and other council meetings under these different circumstances. Tonight, we don't have any phone calls or emails or written correspondence to respond to, but citizens and the public in general are welcome to contact the city via the website or the city app, email, and phone to make comment or ask questions on any subject. We ask your patience regarding any difficulties that may arise as we move this new format of the council meeting on a temporary basis. We come now to the consent agenda. These are items that will be voted on together unless a council member asks for one of these to be pulled. So is there a council member that desires any of these pulled?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right.
All second?
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, and it is unanimous. Now we move to the financial update. Ms. Dozier, who is our CFO, and Ms. McElhanan or Kayla will introduce this item.
Financial update for the month ended March 31st, 2020.
All right. See, could bring the slides up. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm here to give you a brief update on the month ended March 31st, but I know you're more interested in what's happening currently and what's happened during the month of April as well. So where I have some early information available, I'll pass that along, but the numbers that are shown here on the slides are through the end of March. Moving first to the general fund, you'll see that for the month, or I'm sorry, year to date through March 31st, the general fund has received revenue of 18.2 million compared to expenses of 12.7 million. It's normal to have revenues exceeding expenditures at this point in the year because property taxes are due at the end of January. A few things on the revenue side to note. As far as property taxes go, we're slightly behind budget, but that's due to the delinquency of a large taxpayer that we've been discussing for a few months now. On the sales tax side, sales tax had been tracking very, very close to budget. Through March, we were at 4.6% compared to the prior year. I can tell you that we have already received sales tax for April. You'll remember that sales tax is received two months after the fact, so April sales tax represents taxes collected on sales in February. So for that April sales tax payment, there was a little bit of a prior period adjustment, but when I factor that out and just look at the current period to current period, we were still up over the prior year, up 1.5% over last year, and still right on track with budget. So we expect the first real hit on sales tax to come with our May sales tax that represents sales in March, and we'll receive that on May the 8th. I'm hoping May 6th or so, we'll get a little bit of information from the comptroller on it. So those March sales, all the sales tax was due to the comptroller on April 20th, so the comptroller does have those returns at this point. I was hoping maybe there would be some information coming from them in time for this meeting, but we haven't heard anything from the comptroller yet, so it looks like we're going to have to wait until next week and see where we go. You may remember last month, we talked about the sales tax projections, and you know, that's the revenue source that we expect to take the largest hit dollar-wise. Our projections were that that May sales tax for March sales would come in 15% under budget for the month, so we'll see how that turns out. You know, it does seem like there is a lot of activity going on in town, but I'm not sure exactly how that will translate into sales tax, and that is something that we will continue to update. We had, in the scenario that we discussed last month with the $2.2 million revenue shortfall, we were assuming basically two months at the pretty much closed kind of position where sales tax would be off 40% from budget, but we'd still be collecting sales tax on utilities and groceries, or well, taxable groceries. And so anyway, you know, maybe if retail is opening up a little bit before that two-month period, that could be a good sign, but it's too soon to say at this point. So more to come on that, and we'll send out some updates as soon as we have them available. Other revenue has been trending a little bit below budget. We've been talking about that as well. Municipal court revenue has been coming in below budget, and municipal court EMS and recreation revenue are the other ones that we discussed last month, that we all, we expect to see significant decreases in all of those categories as well. And so as we, you know, as we go on through the year, we'll continue adjusting our assumptions there. On the expenditure side, expenditures are trending a little bit better than budget, so that's good. It was mostly due to some vacancies that we had in police and parks and just the timing of some maintenance expenditures, but as we go on through the year, you will see expenditures trending significantly below budget because we've implemented a lot of budget cuts, you know, $2.2 million worth of budget cuts that we expect to realize over the next six months. So you'll see significant savings from budget as we move on through the year. On the water fund side, things are looking very good there. Revenue's trending very close to budget. Our new rates, our new models, all that seemed to be working well, and we've been trying to closely look at water consumption and try to determine what kind of impact is, are people staying at home and businesses being closed, you know, is that going to impact water consumption? It's a little bit early to tell. We read meters, you know, after the fact, so when we read your meter today, it's for the previous month's consumption. So in March, it was definitely too soon to tell. In April, when we were reading for March, consumption was down a little bit on both the residential and the commercial side, but we had more rain this March than we did last March, so it's hard to isolate that variable there, but we'll continue to see if we can see any trends emerging related to COVID on the water consumption side. You'll notice that other revenue is significantly better than budget, and we've had great sales this year on water and sewer taps and new meters that are contributing to that. On the water fund expenditure side, we're trending better than budget there. We have some vacancies, and we also have some maintenance expenses that, you know, hard to predict when they're going to happen and just haven't happened. But one thing to note on the water fund and actually on all the funds is even the funds that may have less impact from COVID-19, where we're implementing budget cuts and especially department budget cuts across the board in all departments, so it's not that water fund employees, you know, still get to travel, but general fund employees don't or anything like that. We're implementing cuts across the board, so we expect on the water fund expenditure side to see significant savings the rest of the year as well as those departments implement their budget cuts. All right.
Can you get back on that previous slide?
Yes, sir.
And if you want to get back to me later, just as I just noticed that, so our expenditures this year are about, what, 475,000 more than they were last year at this time?
Mm-hmm.
Is that attributed to anything particular, or?
Let me see. Let me get back to you and tell you a specific thing. I think it may be maintenance-related, but I want to verify that.
Okay. Because I was just, again, from the previous slide, we're still, I mean, water fund's still in a negative number situation. Is that normal?
Yes, it is. We usually stay negative until we hit the summer months, and that's when we really see our revenue pick up.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, yeah, good question. And I'll get back to you and send it out to all of council with the variation analysis.
That's fine, I'm just curious. It's a pretty significant amount of money, and I'm just curious what we've done differently this year to spend that much more money.
Okay. I will get back to you on that. Moving forward to the other funds summary, so we have a few other funds to look at. The Development Services Fund, looking there, we have revenues of 687,000 compared to expenditures of 413,000, and we actually, as far as the COVID impact on the Development Services Fund, we actually are expecting to make our revenue budget in this fund for the year. There are multiple projects that we've already gotten preliminary information on, especially a lot of projects that are through Kerrville Independent School District, not just the new middle school, but at, you know, all the different campuses that they have pretty significant projects going on. We expect to see fees from those projects, so at this point, it looks like, you know, just if those known projects come in, we'll be able to meet our revenue budget on the Development Services side for the year. So that's good news. And then looking at the expenditures, like the water fund, even though this is a separate fund, we asked the departments in the Development Services Fund to go through and see what they could cut from their budget, and they've come up with a list of cuts as well. The Development Services Fund is a little bit different than some funds because basically we have revenues and we have expenditures, and our expenditures are more than our revenues, and whatever that difference is, we make up for it with a transfer from the general fund to the Development Services Fund. So if they can meet their revenues and cut their expenses, then the general fund won't have to transfer as much money to them, so it does end up helping the general fund if the Development Services Fund can.
I would like to comment from a statement you have in regard to that. My thought was, okay, the more Development Services save, the less they get from the general fund.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and when we broke that fund out into its own fund, we wanted to be able to really look at, you know, are they able to pay for their expenditures, or, you know, how much do the fees actually cover versus their expenses? So this is helpful to see that. All right, and then looking at the golf fund, year-to-date, 375,000 in revenues and 441,000 in expenditures. A few updates from April on the golf fund, so, well, through March, our green fees were trending up a little bit, the month of March. 2020 was better than the month of March 2019. Things changed in April, and the golf course was closed for a significant period, so we still have a few days of April left, and they are, you know, receiving some green fees now, but as of right now, April is down 72% compared to April of 2019.
How much was it closed? Was it closed 20 days approximately, something like that?
About two weeks, because there were some partial closures given walking versus cross.
Right, right. I was just trying to get an idea of when that started, I couldn't remember.
It was before Easter?
I think it was after Easter.
Or was it right after? Right after? Okay, the Monday after Easter, and then, yes, and then when it did reopen, it's been with restrictions, obviously, so not the full operations. The last fund that we'll discuss is the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund. Obviously, this is one that will be hit significantly as well with the COVID impact, so once again, you know, through March, things were looking good, and we were looking better than prior year, and it was, things were going pretty well. This is a fund that receives revenues on a one-month lag, so sales tax is two months, but occupancy tax is one month, so the March revenue here is for February hotel stays. So anyway, I can tell you that through the end of April, this is actually a little bit of good news, in the agenda bill, I only had data through the end, through April 18th, and we were down, let's see, 78%, but we did receive quite a few payments after that, so we are down 56.7% for the month of April.
Yes, that's good news. That's the good news?
Right, I know, I feel like a kid talking about grades to their parents.
Well, at least you put 78% first.
Is the golf fund, is it, how is that broken out under our budget monthly when we look at that? Is it just a straight line across?
No, it's not. We use, we have several years of historical data that are averaged together, and then we do a percentage allocation to each month based on that, because there definitely is seasonality.
The seasonality would be now is when we would be correct.
Yes, yeah, so April is usually a large month because it represents the, like, spring break and a lot of revenues then. So yeah, down 88,000 in the month of April compared to April 2019.
When do we do the dispersments out of that fund throughout the year?
Yeah, throughout the year. So some of the largest dispersments from that fund go to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we do dispersments to them on a quarterly basis, so we make four payments throughout the year. We also do some, like, special event funding, that kind of thing, and that would coincide with when the event happens, so a couple of different ways, but that large CBB payment happens on a quarterly basis.
I recall in our last meeting, when you did the other presentation, there was some discussion that CBB was looking hard at their budget and they were going to get back to us. Have they done so?
Yes, they have, and that's correct. EA and I met with Charlie McIlvein and Julie Land from the CBB, and they did go through and really scrub and look especially at, you know, what things could be cut. Some of their advertising contracts, you know, had already been signed and already been committed to, but they even went back to a lot of those and tried to get out of contracts. And anyway, they came up with 15% in cuts, which equates to about $149,000, and we are taking that out of their last two quarterly payments. We still have two more quarterly payments to make to them, and so we're taking those cuts out of the last two quarterly payments, divided equally between them. They've made some changes in, you know, obviously, the visitor center is closed, and they do have some part-time staffing that, you know, is not coming in and not being paid. Most of their cuts were in advertising. They also cut pretty significantly on, like, supplies. They do different kind of welcome, like, merch for conventions and that kind of thing, so they're cutting back on all of that, trying to delay until next year if they don't have any, you know, conventions lined up that they know they need to give supplies to, that kind of thing.
Good, thank you.
All right, and last thing is real estate metrics. So I received these for the month of March. Once again, this is one of those, I don't know how this is going to trend going forward, but year-to-date through March, you can see that number of homes sold was just about flat, 218 versus 217. Prices, both of the median and the average, were up pretty significantly. Days on the market up a little bit, and then it's going to be very interesting to see how COVID will impact the real estate market. All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
I'm going to stay up here and move on to the next agenda item as well.
Okay. Now, we have a presentation on the COVID-19 response.
Actually, it's 3A, the resolution.
Oh, yeah, right, I'm sorry. Yeah, resolution. Ms. McInturf, would you read that in for us, 3A?
Resolution number 9-2020, a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division by the City of Kerrville for eligible COVID-19-related expenses.
All right.
All right, I wanted to just give you some brief information about what this resolution is. We're asking for your approval of a resolution that will authorize us to submit a grant to the Office of the Governor, and the way this works, this actually is coming from federal money, so in one of the COVID packages passed by the federal government, they allocated some money to local governments. That local government money only went directly to a local government with populations or to a location with populations over 500,000, so obviously Kerrville did not get any direct allocation. For cities that are less than 500,000, the money went to the states, and then it's up to the states to distribute to individual municipalities. So Texas received 37.8 million, and of that, it was further divided to where ACOG, that's the Alamo Area Council of Governments, received 3.1 million, and that 3.1 million can be distributed among the members of ACOG. And one thing to remember there is that San Antonio is over 500,000, so they are not part of this 3 million. They got money directly from the federal government. And the way that Texas decided to do it is through a grant application process with the Office of the Governor. The Office of the Governor already had a grant process in place. They have a, you know, electronic grant application process. The police department uses it frequently. It's just like the process that you approved a resolution for in the consent agenda today for a police grant. So that, since they already had that infrastructure in place, they said we'd like to use that and have cities apply that way for these COVID funds. And part of the process requires that the council submit a resolution with this grant application. So this one's a little bit hard to know exactly what we're applying for because we have to estimate what we think our eligible COVID expenses will be from February 1st of this year through January 31st of 2021, and write a grant for that amount. So what we've done is we've looked at our expenses to date, which we've had about $28,000 worth of, like, supplies, PPE, overtime specifically related to the Emergency Operations Center, that kind of thing, and we've tried to annualize those expenses, figure out how long these supplies will last, when we'll need to reorder, that kind of thing. And then in addition to that, we can ask for, this is kind of more the normal grant application, like the police grant that you just approved a resolution for. There's a few things that would qualify, we think, under this funding, but we will only purchase those things if the grant is approved. The, you know, the first portion of it, the 29,000 that I just talked about, that's, you know, that's going to happen, we're going to buy our PPE supplies, all that kind of stuff throughout the year, but then there's a portion of it that we'll only buy if it's approved. So the way that it's looking, let's see, well, because the Office of the Governor recognizes that this is a little bit different situation than usual, they ask us today to submit a letter of intent to apply for a grant so they can start getting an idea of who's going to apply and how much they're going to ask for. And they also have said that they intend to process these very quickly and that they hope that it, that the money will get to the cities as quickly as possible and that the applications will be processed as they come in. So the application isn't due until June 15th, but we've seen what has happened in other programs where the money runs out, so we'd like to get ours in as quickly as possible. So as of today, we're estimating that we are going to apply for 215,000 in grant funding. That number's not in your agenda bill, because we're still working on it, but it's going to be close to that. So of that 215,000, we're estimating about 124,000 for just reimbursement of those COVID-related expenses, the PPE, the supplies, the overtime. Then our police department is also requesting 32,000 for some specific equipment that they would only buy if we received this grant. I have those detailed there, a fever thermal imager detection system that uses a camera to scan for fever. They would use this when people come into a new shift so that they could scan all their employees and check them for temperature before their shift starts. They also would like a first responder ozone sterilization system, actually two of those, that can be used for sterilizing patrol vehicles, ambulances, offices, that kind of thing. It's a mist kind of system that you, you know, put in the car for 25 minutes and it completely cleans and sterilizes it. They also would like to purchase some handheld UVC sterilizers, so you may have heard of that, where it's actually just a light, and it's a UV light that sterilizes what it touches. So those were some things that we could definitely use, but we would only get, we'd only purchase if we received the grant. And then also the fire department, we just got information from them today, so I'm adding this on late, they are requesting $60,000 to purchase four AeroClave RDS 3110 systems. It sounds very impressive, don't you think?
Those are cool.
So, yes, so this would be one for each station, and they are used to sterilize and decontaminate ambulances, fire apparatus, and stations, and it's similar to the ozone sterilization, but this is the standard for fire departments, and like, the San Antonio Fire Department uses something similar to this, and it's a mist sterilization system. And so those are about $15,000 each, and they're requesting one for each fire station for a total of $60,000. And we will have to, there's, you know, a few strings attached to this. First of all, it's a reimbursement grant, so they do not just send you the money. You have to spend the money, turn in your receipts, you're purchasing policy compliance, all that, and then they will review it and reimburse you. We also will be required to submit quarterly reports with metrics and showing how we're using these supplies and if they're effective or not effective, that kind of thing. So anyway, but we would like to apply for this grant, and we are asking for your approval of this resolution.
I would just like to say in regard to the first responders, having the kind of equipment that is needed to protect them and to keep those vehicles sanitized and so forth is very important. You think about first responder policemen going up to an automobile that he stopped, you know, and degree of contact there, what the fire department and police face when there's an automobile accident, in terms of their necessary contact with the individuals and everything else. I hope we get this.
Yeah, I do too, absolutely. It could definitely be put to good use.
I'm just amazed at how much these things cost. I mean, I can see why we don't already have them, when sometimes you hear we should have maybe been planning and had, well, $15,000 per thermal imager detection system? You know, that's, seems like a lot of money. I mean, I know it's, I know what it does, but were y'all somewhat surprised at the expense of some of these really important things? I mean, I think you could probably use the sterilization system anytime, you know, but who wants to spend $800 per system? I just, I'm just amazed, you know, I guess I wish I'd been in one of these businesses and thought of this first, because, anyway.
Yeah, and certainly we do have processes in place to clean the vehicles and the ambulances and all of that now, but these, you know, are even more intensive and really get down into cracks and crevices and, you know, that kind of thing, so it would be wonderful to have. to have these kind of resources.
I agree.
Do you know, Amy, are any of these things that the fire department would, would use also, or do they already have them?
Yeah, so the fire department is asking, and they added on late today, so that's why they're not on the agenda bill, so I apologize for that, but the, yeah, the fire department is asking for their own sterilization, decontamination system, they are asking for four of them at $15,000 each, and it's a specific system that other fire departments use, it's called AeroClave.
Okay, thank you.
You need a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve item 3A, resolution number oh nine dash two zero two zero.
Okay.
All second.
All right, you got a motion, a second? All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand? Okay, good.
When will you know, Amy, do you know, how quickly?
I don't know, you know, the, all that, the email that we received from them today just specifically said that they plan to expedite the process of issuing awards as quickly as possible and as applications come in, but they didn't give any, you know, within a week or within a month kind of thing.
Where does it go exactly?
It goes to the Office of the Governor, so it goes to Austin.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our briefing, Ms. McInturf?
Briefing and possible action as to the city's ongoing preparedness and response to COVID-19 coronavirus.
Okay.
Mayor and Council, I'll start, and we've got the chief that also wants to provide some information, and that I know some of you have talked to me individually about some things that you would like to bring up under this agenda item as well. Of course, this is the topic of the day, right? And yesterday, at the governor's news conference, he released his report to open Texas. Businesses and residents can find this report, sixty-three page document, on our website for more information, and I'm gonna do a high-level summary along with the chief on what's included in here. So, the governor's orders contain certain provisions for counties that are not experiencing as much of the COVID cases. And so, because our case, active cases are less than five, we're allowed to open a greater percentage of our businesses, so rather than 25%, that would be 50%, but we have to have that attested to by the county, it's done at the county level. All that paperwork has been processed today, so it's either on its way there, or it will be there shortly, or already there. And so, the message there is that all of our businesses that are eligible, not all are, but those that are eligible, could open up 50% of their occupancy as opposed to 25. Excuse me. So, in addition to the...
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Hypothetically, so, we open up at 50% because we have less than five active cases, next week, we get reports of 10 active cases, do we retro back to 25%?
Not automatically. So, that call is made essentially by the governor and DSHS, and there's a lot of factors they look at, in the, in the report, it actually gives some areas and metrics that need to be looked at, and ultimately, it's the governor that makes that call.
Thank you.
So, it's not an automatic thing, and they'll look at more than just the cases, what else is going on in your community.
Okay, thank you.
So, we also have sent out today electronically a letter to our restaurants to share with them the news about the 50% so that they can begin planning, I've been contacted by different restaurants, you know, what is, what are you all gonna do, what's gonna be the guidelines? So, we try to get something out to them as quickly as possible, so we met with our environmental inspection folks this morning, and outlined a plan, and so now Daryl and company are, are making those contacts with the restaurants and providing some initial guidance, with the idea that we're gonna be coming back very soon, Stewart's already putting this together with the help of a lot of folks, a toolkit for restaurants and businesses about what are the guidelines, and if there's some missing things in the report or in the executive order, like how do you define occupancy, and things that we've gotten into about outdoor, and how do you determine outdoor seating and all that, so we're wading through all that now, and gonna provide more guidance with this toolkit. Not all businesses can open, for example, if an establishment obtains 51% or more of its sales from alcohol, it's considered technically a bar, it can't open. So, we have about 10 of those that you might think are restaurants, but they are actually, they have to display that 51% sign at their establishments. Barbers, salons, gyms, and some other businesses are not permitted open, and then businesses are encouraged just to review the governor's report, it's pretty clear about who's, who can open and who cannot. Additionally, there's going to be guidance, additional guidance on May eighteenth about what else might be opening, if the trends are improving. Schools will remain closed, which is not any surprise, I think, to folks, and then no visitors are permitted at adult living facilities such as nursing homes or assisted living centers. With regard to city operations, we'll be treating our buildings, like City Hall, library, and other buildings, like a business would, that's opening for retail, so we're looking at our floor space, how many people can we have in there at a time, how are we social distancing, how are we protecting our employees, we're gonna be asking our employees that are facing public to, to wear masks, so for their protection and for the public's protection. We're also going to try to accommodate as much as possible, as recommended in the report, to protect the at-risk population, so we're gonna be looking at special hours that folks that are 65 and older can come in and take care of business, if they so choose to exercise that option. In addition, this Friday, we'll be opening our tennis courts under certain requirements, and allow single rider carts at the Scott Schreiner Golf Course. On Monday, we plan to reopen the library under certain requirements, we need a little more time there, because we're gonna be putting up some plexiglass shields and putting some processes in place. It's gonna be a little more challenging there with the programming can't happen, and the computers probably are not going to be available, just because of the whole sanitation issues and interactive nature of those, which are actually called out in the governor's report as items that are things that you cannot, cannot do right now. Same would be true for museums, but we don't currently own a museum, so our, our local museums, we would be adhering to that. Tonight, under this item, I would request that you take action to authorize me to reopen the library when it's ready. It's kind of a technicality, because the governor says in his order that you may reopen if the local government approves it. Well, I don't have that authority, as you all are the governing bodies, so you, I'm asking you to authorize me to reopen the library, so that we can get that done on Monday.
That's specific to libraries?
Libraries and museums.
Libraries and museums.
If they're public.
If they're, okay.
Also, your May meeting, so your, your next regular meeting will return to the, closer to the former format, not entirely, so the public will be allowed to come in, and we'll be looking at occupancy, social distancing, sanitation, a number of things to make sure that's a safe environment, but City Hall will be, doors will be open, and so, so will the council meetings. And then, finally, some of our boards and commissions will resume meeting, probably in the June and July timeframe, and we already have P&amp;Z scheduled in June to take up some items, and so, we're working on that as well. If there's not any questions for me at this point, I will turn over to the chief to give a little bit more information about cases and so forth, and testing.
Mark, just one question I keep getting, on the golf carts, these are own, the only golf carts allowed will be the private golf carts, there will not be a public one like a Schreiner, they, their golf carts will not be available for rent.
No, this is a change, so right now, they're not available for rent at the city's course, but beginning Friday, they will be.
Oh, beginning Friday, okay.
It's, but it's one rider per cart, unless you're part of the same household, that's that same kind of rule that River Hill and Comanche Trace are exercising.
And that you put forth in your memo earlier, that they're gonna be very diligent about sanitizing, wiping those carts down when they come in.
That's right, you bet, and we're still gonna be practicing some pretty strict guidelines as far as access to the pro shop and other, other things that we, you know, we were doing before we actually closed it.
I had a question today, and this kind of goes to the budget as well, but the question being, if we're really going to have to cut that much out of our budget, what are citizens going to have to experience as far as cuts to their services? And my thought is that the services will continue, but I would just want to ask that question for clarification, if anything's gonna change as far as the services?
Right, I, I don't anticipate any significant changes in service levels, other than we may not do as much in the way of street work that we talked about at your last meeting, but it's, we will, we'll do as much as the year that we planned, we were kind of doubling up this year, and so, we're kind of, kind of curtail that back, and it may be that two months from now, the picture looks different, and we can fire that all back up, in terms of doing that work. So, we're just kind of holding off on, or deferring those expenses, and we've swept all of the cuts to the budget to a separate account, so they can't be spent, and unless, unless it does improve, so that we can count on it being there to help balance the budget. The only thing that I would comment that, that's, that might be considered a cutback in service, is really an extra service, and that is the drop-off recycling center at the landfill. So, we'll be discontinuing that May first, May fourth, Monday, May fourth. And so, people can still obviously recycle at the curb, and then businesses are also recycling on-site in many cases, and we'll help manage through that, and we've actually seen a decline in the amount of use for the drop-off center, and it saves us about $60,000 a year not to operate it, and it, it is a duplication of service. The county has already terminated their recycling services, their trailer services some weeks ago, but that's the only thing that I can really think of, other than just having to operate differently. The costs that will incur, like these plexiglass shields and so forth, we'll file for reimbursement for those expenses.
You don't have a magic ball that says when salons and barber shops will be able to open?
Yeah, I mean, those are just tricky, I, you know, because it's a lot more intimate environment, and I don't know what the doctors and the data will do about, about that one, but the governor is saying that he'll probably have an update on the eighteenth, but no idea.
You know, because it seems like to be a licensed beautician, or what, whatever styles, whatever the name is, you have to go through an extensive class on cleanliness, I mean, and, and making sure all your utensils and everything, I just, it is interesting how you could go eat at a restaurant, but you couldn't, and that obviously cleans too, but I mean, not every employee is licensed.
Yeah.
Mark, do you want us to go ahead and authorize this now, or do you want to wait till the...
That's, I was gonna ask, you need that now?
Now, it'd be fine, and then we'll have the chief come up.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to reopen the library.
All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand? I would like to say this, in regard to the city's getting on this whole issue of the coronavirus so quickly. January twenty-one was the first case of the coronavirus in the US, COVID-19, in Washington State. The city, on the twenty-fourth of January, came together with the hospital and the county to begin to look at response, and then later, school superintendent was added, president of Schreiner University, some emergency management personnel to do coordinated response, and I think that has made an exceptional difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, I'll just pick up where the city manager left out, he's pretty much laid out the process of the governor to reopen Texas, as it pertains to Kerrville and Kerr County, but there's a few additional areas I'd like to emphasize, and the first is, is that COVID-19 continues to remain a serious threat to our community, and it's, it's extremely, it's extremely important that we continue to follow the health precautions and sanitizing guidelines, particularly as it pertains to hygiene and social distancing. And one of the things that captured my attention, the governor put specific emphasis on the vulnerable population, people 65 years older, especially those with medical issues like heart disease, diabetes, cancer, and weakened immune system, they're basically at a higher risk of getting very sick and even dying from COVID-19. So, just to give you some numbers, based on the data of the Texas Department of State Health Services, of the confirmed COVID-19 deaths in the state of Texas, 76% were Texans, 65 older, so just want to remind the community of that. Since your last briefing, basically, the COVID-19 cases in Texas continue to rise, and we've seen them double, a double in the number of tests that are being provided, the number of confirmed cases, and sadly to say, there's been a double in the number of deaths also. But, testing is one of the keys to either slowing or stopping the spread of COVID-19, and I'm happy to report to you tonight that Texas has expanded its testing capacity, and right now, today, they're performing approximately fifteen to 20,000 tests per day. And the, the goal is to expand and reach 30,000 tests daily within the state of Texas, and they believe that the state will achieve that within the near future.
Chief, what kind of a test is that, is it a nose swab, is it a finger prick, a blood?
Same thing that we're doing at Outreach Clinic, it's the screening, and then from the screening, that is sent on to the lab to be tested, to confirm if it's COVID-19 or not.
But do they, do they do it through a nose swab?
Same way.
That, that's what it is, okay.
Okay. So, let's take a look at the city of Kerrville, as of today, the city manager mentioned, we're still at just five cases total in Kerr County, and of those five cases, three have recovered. The numbers on Peterson, the Outreach Clinic, as far the week reporting from April thirteenth to April seventeenth, they had 47 visits, all 47 were tested for COVID-19. Of those 47 tests, 46 were negative, and there was one positive test result, which was basically a retest of a Peterson healthcare worker. CPL, which is the laboratory that does the actual tests for Peterson Franklin Clinic and most of the physicians in the city, for the period from April nineteenth to April twenty-fifth, they conducted 82 COVID-19 tests, 81 were negative, one positive, and the positive was the same Peterson healthcare worker that was retested. And basically, what happens there is, when it involves a healthcare worker, they have to have two negative test results before they can go back, so that's why they're retested. We've been working with the Department of State Health Services to get free testing here in Kerr County, and the Texas Military Department, which is a cute name for the National Guard, has given us a date of May second, which is this Saturday from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, to be in our city to conduct free COVID-19 testing. Citizens will be able to find the details on how to access this free testing on the city's website, we'll release a public service announcement, and even provide it on our social media websites, but it won't, we won't be able to get that information up until 48 hours in advance, that's one of the requirements for the free testing site.
Will there be any signage, other than electronic notification, like a banner or any?
We've, fire department and PD and, has been working with the police department, and we're gonna try to get up multiple electronic signages.
Because not everybody would have access to...
Along with just a media blast and everything, we can get out on it. And then in addition to that, I just want to remind those that are wanting to obtain a free COVID-19 test through that process, testing will be provided to those that are symptomatic, and you have to schedule an appointment online before reporting to the testing site. Call center numbers, we've been averaging about 13 calls per day in the joint ELC call center, that spiked on yesterday, Monday, to 23, 24 today, and we attribute that increase to basically the governor's announcement on yesterday. Finally, we're still in phase five of our pandemic plan, which simply means, as I've said before, you know, we're at the highest level of alert we can in preparation for a COVID-19 surge that may happen here in Kerrville. With that, I'll take any questions you may have for me.
At the Youth of Vin Center, are, are there, based on the population and number of people... At the Youth Event Center, are there, based on the population and number of people that are coming through there, will there be any changes to that operation, or is it going to continue as?
I can take that question. So yeah, it's likely that it will. Peterson will be making an announcement soon, perhaps as early as next week, they'll be transitioning to a different location, but they won't stop screening.
And this may be a question for either one of you. Goes back to what you were talking about, city manager. Who would some, a local business, including a restaurant, who would they call at the City Hall to get information about what they can and can't do? And I know that you had mentioned that this report from the governor is on the city website, and this is an excellent resource. So that would be the first place, but where else would they, who else would they talk to?
Most everything they need to know is in that book, because it's got checklists and some details. There are some things that have come up that aren't covered, and we've been fielding those questions in a variety of ways. If it's a restaurant, they probably should call Darrell. Darrell's got a great relationship with all of them. Again, he sent out a communication today and asked them to call him if he has, they have additional questions until we can get this toolkit out. We hope to have that out within the next day or two with more detail and guidance in it. And then they can also call the 258-111?
Yeah, 258-111.
And so they've still been taking calls there. Jeremy is over there helping to answer questions with Coy and others, so that would also be a way to get more information.
Okay, 258-111. Okay, all right.
Chief, another question, if someone was curious. The testing that's being done at the event center at the Egg Barn is exactly the same testing that will be done Saturday by here at the Croc Center.
Correct. It's COVID-19.
Same, same.
Yes.
The big difference is it'll be available to anybody, and it's free.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions?
Well, I'll just make something for the record. I was reading through the, particularly the section on the restaurants in the book, and there's some responsibilities of customers too. Because I might be one of those, I was curious how I should, you know, should I wear a mask to the restaurant starting Friday and on? And there are, it's all very, you know, specific in there as to when you would wear that mask in the restaurant and all that kind. So I think, you know, everyone should read it, really, not just the restaurants, just any citizen who might be interested in how do I go into Belks, or how do I go to the next restaurant and conduct myself?
Well, I'm glad you brought the mask up, because that's a question that we've got at the Emergency Operations Center hotline. It's not required. The governor was very explicit about that. It's not required, but it is suggested that if you're out, and especially if you're a vulnerable population, to wear them. We're going to ask our employees to wear them that are dealing with the public regularly, so not the folks that are out in the field, so to speak, but the people at the desk and so forth.
Right. So no matter where you are, you are not required?
That's right. And in fact, some cities have adopted orders that include them, and the governor's order supersedes those orders.
So it's not mandatory, and in addition to what the city manager said, if you think you're going to be somewhere where you can't maintain that six-foot social distancing, then it's highly recommended that you have a mask on.
I think that's what it says regarding restaurants too, because if you're in the restaurant and you want to get up and move around the restaurant, you know, that's when it said you might have your mask because you might, might need it, but it isn't mandatory. But it's interesting how it's worded as far as, as long as you're sitting in your seat the entire time, you don't have to go to the buffet language, I don't think they can even do. I think they have to bring it to you and all those types of things, but, so I just would encourage everyone to read it for yourself. It's like a two-page section out of the 64 pages for restaurants that aren't buffets, that type of thing. So, and I actually planned to go to a restaurant on Friday, so I was particularly interested in how that would handle, how I would handle myself, so as to make it easier even on the restaurateur, so. My two cents.
Okay, yes.
So I think what I heard you say, and just to clarify, is that we'll keep the Joint Operations Center going, but maybe its reach will expand to beyond just the COVID-19 testing, and how are we doing that in the community, to maybe more, how do I reopen my business or?
Right. So the whole Joint Operations Center became more of a virtual operation, whether it was phone calls or people dialing in for meetings and so forth. It's still this cooperative arrangement that the mayor mentioned earlier, but it includes not just our regular Thursday meetings with the local leadership, followed by a public service announcement, and we're going to do that this Thursday again, by the way, to share some more information, but it also includes the call center. If the call center calls drop off significantly, and, you know, that, we saw some of that even before the governor's order, we might discontinue it, because Coy is also taking just regular calls from City Hall from where she's sitting, and she just takes both. And so it's not like it would shut down. She would still be taking those calls and sending them to the proper individual.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you for the good work.
Anything else to add in regard to the response to COVID-19?
Could I share a little bit about our food relief fund that has been going on? It's really good news in that regard. Today, today, we've had $34,862 has come in. We know we're going to have another $5,000 tomorrow, so that will put us up almost $40,000. Some of us had a goal when we started this of $50,000, and Delaine and I particularly had that goal, and we would just love to be able to reach that, so we'd be basically $10,000 away. We have allocated, as of today, $24,000 of the $34,000, and every bit has gone for food. Again, I want to emphasize that through the Community Foundation and this Food Relief Fund, they are not charging one cent for handling all of the donations coming in and all of the money going out. The other good thing is they're not, we're not waiting until June or July to distribute this money. It's been, every application that comes in is looked at, and a decision is made right away. So the money is going out to those that need it. So just, I'm just so, so appreciative of the Community Foundation. They're just, they're doing just a wonderful job for us. I think it's worth noting, and I hope maybe some people have seen pictures and such, and many, many shout-outs to the San Antonio Food Bank. Yesterday, they did the San Antonio Mobile Food Pantry in Kerrville. They served almost 500 families for a total of almost 18,000 people. Fantastic. 64,000 pounds of food. They had three big semis that brought it all in. Normally, they have, they do about 12,000 in that type of situation. Volunteers were manning all of the booths, and the line went all the way down to Billie Jean's at one time. So it's, they're just, they've done a super job over there. Mustard Seed Ministry was really in charge of it, and Beth Palmer just had everything organized to a T, and St. Vincent's, DePaul, and CAM, and the Doyle Center were all a part of that. So it was just really, really super. And what else?
Well, I happened to be on one station, and I saw the first car, okay? And so I asked her, how did you manage to get first in line? And she said, well, I was here at 5:45 this morning, and it opened at 9:45, supposed to open at 10:00. So, you know, people knew about it. The call center, our hotline, got real busy the same day. People had heard a little bit about this mobile food pantry coming, where was it? So we were, I was really glad we had the hotline, because one lady called at 1:00 and I said, it's open till 3:00. If you can get there before 3:00, you'll get, you'll get served. And they did not run out of food. I'm telling you, when I saw the pallets, I thought, there's no way we're going to get, all of this food's going to leave. And it, just little by little, because a lot of the cars are four family, you know, four families per car, but people were working, I'm telling you, kids, a lot of college students home from college and high school students. It was a really great thing to see them all very active and helping our community, and I think they got a lot out of it too, so.
And they gave, they had milk, chicken breasts, water, orange juice, canned goods, fresh vegetables, some dried fruit. I mean, so it was a variety of things for people, and it's just, just super. It was, it was a sight to see.
We even had people from San Antonio calling us, saying, can you deliver some of this? Well, it's in Kerrville, so no, but here's the San Antonio Food Bank's number. So it's just, people just want to know, where is this food? We're in San Antonio, but we heard about it, so.
And some people thought maybe the food pantry food was not, was given to us, but it is not. We have to pay for that. So, so that's where, that, this money that's going into the relief fund at the Community Foundation will be used. So, so that's another reason for our $50,000 goal, at least, that we need, we need to get there. And I want to thank our, the rest of the council. They have been helping to raise money, sending out emails and bringing in some nice, nice funds, so thank you guys for helping.
Thank you, just for getting the word out.
Appraisals?
Oh, yes. The last thing I would like to do, thank you. I want, would like, at our next meeting, if the city, or if the staff, would create a resolution that we would send to our representatives and the governor's office, asking them to postpone any raised values in our appraiser, property values until next year.
Existing values?
Pardon?
On existing values?
On existing values, yes. We had word that they've come in and it's not enough, and the state just need to ask them to, let's just wait till next year. I don't know if it'll make any difference, but if you guys could put that together for us, and we could send it off.
I think that's a great idea, and I have a question about that too. So the certified rolls, or not the certified rolls, but the, what's being sent out to customers? Does that happen? That will happen before we know anything about whether we can get relief?
Yes, probably. Well, it's hard to say, but that'll be in May, mid-May, so that's coming up pretty quick.
Right.
This is when the notice of estimated values is going out, so that they'll get their proper notice, and then they can protest if they want to.
For the protest period.
Right.
So if that goes out, we're not going to have any kind of answer to that question.
They could, if the whole, I mean.
Well, I got word today that our state delegation is actually talking with the governor's office already, so there's some, the ball's already moving to try to get something done, and I think it'd be nice if we, if we joined on with that and helped to move along.
Yeah, so the movement is to say, whatever the already existing values were last year, we're just going to stay with that number.
Right. The only difference is, there could be a nuance there with if somebody's at a cap or if it's new value, which, you know, wouldn't be in a reappraisal.
I think that information would be helpful to get out somehow.
Like to?
Along with, in tandem with the May 15th or May notices, just because I'd like for the, you know, the taxpayers to know, we're working on something to.
Is there, there isn't any way we could do it sooner?
If you called a special meeting, you could. Right now, it's, your first meeting is what, the 14th-ish?
Yes, I believe.
If we can, I don't mind getting together earlier than that.
I don't either.
I think it would be important to get it there as soon as possible.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, well, so we'll coordinate with you all and set it up a quick special meeting on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And to be clear, the 2020 values are set in January, so what the values we're looking at was prior to any of what's happened now.
Yes, right, yes.
Well, and so the other thing that's, we've got working is that we were audited, because it's for school, for school finance, the state wants to make sure that they're not sending any more money than they need to, and that the local taxes are funding as an appropriate fair share. And so they audit the values every three years or so. And, and so they did, and they found that our, our market was undervalued, and it was in January before all this hit. And so that's part of what we're dealing with as well. So we, we could see some pretty significant increases just on reappraisals, because of your point that it was done in January, and because of this audit.
But surely, they could consider what the times have changed.
Well, and I think that's why you all and others are trying to.
Impress upon them.
Yes, and get something sent to them.
So we don't need to have formal action now? We're just kind of telling you to move on that, or do I need, can I make a motion for anything?
Have to ask the city attorney, could they actually?
We'll draft the resolution.
Just through our kind of consensus here?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you. Brief meeting, but vitally important.
There's an anniversary to celebrate.
We are adjourned.